Good morning. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. It's Monday, August 3, 2015. It is now 8:32. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask Selectman Balastresi to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul.
I want to sing "My Country Tis Of You." That's what we used to do. My country tis of you. Or that when we were kids.
There's a reason why we don't have to do that. Item two, public forum, limited to three minutes on any agenda item. I don't see anybody wishing to address the board, so we'll move on. Item three, approval of the minutes for July 20, August 2015, which was a regular meeting. Anybody?
I would move we approve the minutes.
Motion? Gary, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any additions or corrections? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Item four, Board of Education, Director of Operations, Mifkeren. For dot one, consider and take possible action to award Munger a contract under the CROG bid for repairs of the A.W. Cox roof. Morning. Maybe I should put these on. I can read them.
Thanks for having me. Another project, obviously, we're rolling along with, hopefully to be completed by the end of the summer. So we had some structural issues with the roof at Cox. I guess in the original design, they hung large heating pipes from the rafters underneath the roof. And needs to say, they were not strong enough, it appears, to handle the load of the piping loaded with, you know, full water. So it snapped multiple cross members underneath the roofing system. So we had Horton Associates come out, look at the issue and concern. They designed a system that would correct the problem, that where we could rehang the pipe and make it strong enough to handle that load. So that specification was sent over to CROG. They reviewed it, came out, looked at the situation, placed this bid into our hands for the $27,244. The Standing Building Committee has reviewed the plans and specs before it was sent over to CROG. They have received the bid from CROG and have reviewed that. They have not officially voted on that yet. That will happen tomorrow night. Again, unfortunately, we are working reverse with our meetings. So what I am asking for here today is to have this committee approve that CROG bid to Pat Munger in the amount of $27,244, contingent upon the Standing Building Committee approving it tomorrow. We can start this work immediately following their approval. We've spoken with Pat Munger. They are prepared to move forward upon our approval. And so that's where we're at right now. We do have funds for the project. We had a roofing bond. We replaced the whole roof in about 2009. So the roof structure itself, or the roofing system on top, is fine. It's just the members underneath that have to get replaced. So we'll work from the bottom side up. It will not affect the quote-unquote newer roof that's on there. And we have about $1.1 million left in that bond, so we should be okay, fund-wise, obviously, since it's only $27,000.
I just had a question about that warranty. So you're comfortable that whatever went on?
Absolutely. Correct. Yep.
Penetration?
Nope. It's all, yeah, under the structure. So we won't be touching that roofing system at all.
Related to that, was this, was this something that should have been designed differently? Or were you just using the existing members and not, and then nobody looked at the weight and the strength that they were being forced to carry?
You know, that's a good question. And it was done so long ago, it's hard to say whether it was an engineering problem and should have been designed differently in my eyes. I'm not sure if cooling was added to that building after it was built. So originally in the '60s, it was built with only heat. And then maybe in the '70s, they added cooling and didn't enhance the structure to support those. And there wasn't enough engineering done when they installed that system. That's the only thing I can speculate. I can't tell you for sure.
Okay, so it goes back to the '70s.
Right.
So there's no war, there's no issues of recourse?
Recourse.
Or recourse with whoever did or didn't design it?
Correct.
That far back.
There was a discussion because it's in the section that leads to the addition that was done, I want to say in the '90s, thereabouts, for that gym. It does not actually, you know, go into that section. So we added to the building just about where this stops on. So again, there was no correlation between that new addition and this problem that we're having now. So, yeah.
My second question, why is CROG, what's CROG's involvement in this particular project?
Well, CROG is the Capital Region Council of Governments.
Right.
And they put out a bid every three years, I think it is, that encompasses every nut and bolt that you could kind of think of for a project. And then they award it to a specific vendor.
It's like being on the sleep, sleep list.
It's a state's contract.
All right. That's what I meant.
It's for small, you know, construction projects.
Right. Small and medium.
So it's their bid list, essentially.
And it's been great for us.
Yeah, okay.
As a matter of fact, our Council of Governments, the South Central Council of Governments, is trying to comprise their own bid list, too. I mean, it's a slow process, but they're trying to do that, too.
And we obviously know.
But CROG has been really, really good for us. It's like a mini state bid list.
It allows us to move things along quickly. Pat Munger, who has received the award of that bid for the last six years or so, has been great. They just finished the structural work at Lakes, and that came out, you know, to spec and everything else. It was just fully inspected, and they're done. So that school's pretty much up and ready for the start of school. So we'll try to get this one done as well.
That's going to be my question.
We're, yeah, no, we're getting there. We're getting these things done quickly. So that one is done, and we expect this one to take, I think they said about a week and a half, possibly two weeks. So if we can get started next week, we'll be in good condition.
So that's why you want to come to us first?
Correct. I didn't want to wait another month, or we'll have to have a special meeting to get this approved on Thursday, when you're meeting today, you know.
Okay. So this is contingent, again.
Upon the SBC approval.
Standing Building Committee approving it.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Munger Construction under the CROG bid to the A.W. Cox roof for $27,244, contingent upon SBC approval.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Move along to item five, Park and Recreation. Rick Maynard and Terry Holland Buckley. Five dot two, discuss and take possible action authorizing the First Selectmen to sign a municipal grant program for demand-responsive transportation services.
Good morning.
Good morning, all. How you doing?
Okay. So the responsive transportation grant, it's been around for many, many years. And the money has always been turned over to the Greater New Haven Transit District. This money is offered to the town, but we've always opted to let them take the grant for the rides that they're providing. But as we looked at it this year, and we saw the needs that we were have growing for the amount of transportation, the demand that we were getting, and the need for more dispatch and so on, we based our budget, this current budget, on getting, receiving this grant. And so with it, we are increased the hours of our, what was our part-time dispatch office assistant to full-time. The balance is being paid by the grant, so there's no additional cost to the town. The benefits are covered by the grant. We also have 22 additional hours per week available for bus drivers to help meet the needs that we have. With that, though, we've taken on some of the riders that Greater New Haven Transit District used to provide rides for Guilford residents that now we're taking on. And so we're able to do it within, you know, within the grant that we have. We've kind of broken it down to, you know, what goes to where, between the salaries and benefits, fuel and maintenance, comes out to about $31,000. And the grant this year is just over $44,000. And so that leaves us about $13,000 for contracted service if we need to hire someone else to do, like if we can't get somebody, we could hire a taxi or, you know, some contracted service, which is all allowable in the grant. And we've gone through that. We know what we have to do to get that permission for the state to do that. So it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to be able to provide service at no additional cost to the town.
And this was part of your budget, right?
Correct.
Okay. Under this system, if you don't have the contracted services and you don't use the $44,000, it just doesn't get spent in a given year, or can it get rolled over?
It's a reimbursable, right?
It's carried. They just carry it to the next year.
So you can roll it over?
It's a five-year agreement, or six, maybe. I think it goes to 2021, yeah. And it's, what, about $300,000, I think, roughly?
Yeah.
But it's reimbursable. We spend it, and then there's some reporting that Terry has to do, and then that comes back, you know, we report it quarterly, and then we get reimbursed.
Okay. So you need a motion? Yes, we do. For the First Selectmen to sign a municipal grant program for demand-responsive transportation services.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Before you leave, there was some discussion in budget time about coordinating with some of the other towns to enhance the services for, particularly for seniors in all the towns. Has there been any change in that?
We talked a little bit with Madison, I think.
Yeah, I mean, we talked, we actually share a bus driver. And there's been a couple instances where they were in a location that we really needed some help, and we've helped each other out, but it's pretty minimal. Each town pretty much operates.
We do trips together.
It'd be very hard to coordinate. We do coordinate trips together, yes. And we do share the, you know, we'll share a bus for that and that type of thing.
Maybe with a full-time dispatcher.
Might have a little more time to pursue things.
I mean, we just remember the people that came and said, you know, I have an appointment on X day, and the bus doesn't go on X day, so.
I can meet with Austin again.
You know, anything we can do to, to sort of expand the range of services would be beneficial.
And with this, we are now going, we used to not operate buses on Wednesdays, and we do now. And so we have expanded that way, too, with it.
Rick, I know you're only into your second month, actually. This begins your second month. Today is August 3. How's the activity of this program? Has it picked up? In July, July was your first month, and it's extended. So what's like?
We definitely are providing more rides, but it is so much more manageable.
Okay.
With, with the extra hours. I just, I have two drivers now on Wednesday and Thursday. I used to have one driver out there, and then I would have to jump in.
Terry was driving.
I don't, I think I've driven twice this month. And I have definitely felt a huge difference, you know, in the office, the, having Patty there full-time, you know, Wednesday and Thursday, I'm not bus dispatching all day. You know, I have her doing that. It has definitely made a difference.
So the seniors are making more use of it now?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And the use is up. You know, I did do the statistics from prior year, from the prior year to this year now. And it, the ridership went up, not as steeply as the year before. It's more like a, you know, eight, 10% increase. And then it'll be interesting to see what we go from this year to next year now with taking on the Greater New Haven.
Because I know Gary just alluded to it, but we've heard for a couple of years from the seniors that they required or needed more services.
Mm-hmm.
More rides. And so I haven't heard any more since we instituted that. It's only been a month now.
Yeah.
But they were very pleased to see that in the budget.
We haven't had to turn anybody down, you know. I just, if I need to, I put on another driver. We've got the funds to do it. And it's, I can definitely attest, it's made a huge difference, at least in my, this past month.
And this grant was certainly a big help. So it wasn't Guilford taxpayer dollars.
Yep.
So this was great. Okay. Good work.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to say anything?
No, I just, no.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You provide rides through Uber.
Maybe you should have an app now. Thank you again.
Is Uber operating Guilford?
Item six, Town Engineer Jim Portley, six dot one, consider and take possible action on a resolution authorizing the First Selectmen to sign and execute all documents related to the DECD Urban Action Grant Program.
I don't think we voted on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. No, we never did.
We didn't vote on it?
No, that's what I thought, but nobody said anything, so.
Yeah, we did.
Here we did. You were out of the room. You were out of the room.
All right.
Carl made the motion, said he seconded.
All right, okay.
You, you were handling two different jobs, because there's nobody in the Selectmen's office, okay?
All right.
Can I continue? Thank you. Okay.
Please.
Where'd I leave off? Jim Portley, Town Engineer, we're going to consider and take possible action on a resolution authorizing the First Selectmen to sign and execute all documents related to the DECD Urban Action Grant Program for the Woodfield Water Street street bike project. This was the grant we received the other day.
Right.
At the efforts of the State Representative, Sean Scanlon. Jim?
Yeah, this is, it's pretty exciting. We've been talking about doing something behind.
For a couple of years now.
About a couple of generations.
Few years.
It's been a long time. And because it never, ever got to the point where it was the highest priority, we have so many other things going on, this is kind of a great opportunity for the town to focus on that parking area behind the, we used to call it Food Center, between Woodfield and Water Street. And it's, it's a long time coming. It can be, it could be a very important project for the town. It could extend the green back into that area and make it much more attractive and inviting for people. So this, this is a terrific job by yourself, Joe, and Sean Scanlon, to get this money. And I think it's terrific. So I would recommend highly that the Board of Selectmen authorize Joe to sign the application. The actual amount, we're at $464,000.
$446,500. Okay. Need a motion?
I would move that we authorize the First Selectmen to select to sign and execute all documents related to the DECD Urban Action Grant Program for the Woodfield Water Street Streetscape Project. My one question, we had a certification regarding lobbying. Is that one of the documents that's related to this project? Because there were a couple documents.
I'll second your motion, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, I just wasn't sure which of these documents we were, we were dealing with.
Motion's been made and seconded. Carl, want to discuss it?
No, I don't.
No, I just, I wasn't sure where that document came from.
After we got the money.
After we have the money, now you can't lobby?
No, that's the standard.
That's the standard.
Every, every contract you get, that's a standard.
Just saying that I'm not a lobbyist, but.
If you're not, then you shouldn't be in the job.
I mean, that's what's kind of surprised me, is that's the role.
And Jim, you talked about this before, right? It was just something.
We've gone back. A couple of years ago, we had an application for another grant. We, you know, we designed, or cleverly designed a layout of improvements back there.
But there's always something else.
It's been on the docket for a long time.
And anybody who uses that parking lot has seen the shape it's in. But it's not only, I'm going to let Jim talk more about it, but it's not only repairing the surface of the parking lot. It's, it's a complete upgrade.
Right.
Redesign. Jim, you can take.
Yeah, and we can talk about our parking lot, which has always been, we can always maintain ours, but it's never again been a high priority. But it's all the other parking lots that abut, abut ours. And what we're trying to do is come up with a comprehensive design that would incorporate all the parking lots, so they would kind of serve as one kind of amenity for all the businesses and for the downtown. And as part of that, we would bring in the lighting from the green, the same kind of lighting, put some islands in with, with trees to kind of provide green, but in a way that's not going to hinder snow removal, which was last winter was a heck of an effort. So, you know, it's got to be more than just one thing. And I think the last crucial part is come up with a scheme for handling waste disposal. And people over the years have had arguments back and forth, where you put the dumpsters, where you don't put. So it's got to, it has a lot of parts. I think it'd take a lot of coordination between O'Brien, the businesses, Joe, and myself, and getting to get the design all complete and make, put together a package that you can all be proud of.
Will there be some financial contribution from some of the private landowners?
I think that's something we're going to have to discuss. We, I think, part of our applications, we're obligated to provide $50,000.
Yeah, yeah. We, in the past.
We got to empty up, too.
In the past, when we presented this project for funding, we had approached the private owners to contribute, and we've gotten them together. But the opportunity presented itself so quickly on this round of funding that we didn't have time to meet with them. However, we do have a, a meeting scheduled for the 18th or 17th of this month.
17th.
I can't remember, to meet with the property owners and some of the renters who have businesses in the area around the parking lot and the green, where we will get their concerns and see if they want to participate in any way, so we can expand the project. So, but we'll know then. Some have suggested that they might want to participate, but not ready to say anything at this point yet, so.
So this, at this point, is only on the town land?
Correct.
So if we were to expand it to private land, okay, I didn't understand that. I thought it sort of dealt with.
Let me, let me.
The design really.
The design encompassed more than the town property.
Okay.
It was a more, you know, universal kind of approach. Because, yeah, it was no sense for us to just take our little rectangle and try to.
Yeah.
Right.
And do something there. So it really did look at the whole, the whole area that was, is considered the town parking lot. But, you know, people don't realize a lot of it's, it's private property.
Right.
So it's, it's more than just ours.
Well, how much would, you don't even know, what you need from the property owners in order to complete the project?
It depends what they want to do.
Yeah, I think that we're going to define the scope. We've come up with a very, like a, what we would consider engineering parlance.
So you could do it with the money provided.
A 30% design, it's concept.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, it's like you can, you can either paint your house, or you can recite it. So it's one of the, there's different levels of funding you're going to need.
In discussing this with the business owners years ago, most of them were very much in favor of some kind of an upgrade because of, like, the complaints about the garbage and the waste. Yep. All these other issues. So I think the fact that we have this grant now will push them even harder to, to come together and agree on the plan. I think it'll be great for everyone.
And it may require just everybody coming together and set up a little, you know, it's very premature, but just kind of a little authority, for want of another term, that will manage it, you know, for the waste and so forth. So everybody just comes to the table and says, okay, you know, we're all in this together. We're all going to benefit from it. Let's, let's take some of the issues that have divided us in the past and try to work them out, and then just agree to it, have some kind of a document signed, and go forward. And I think, as Carl has very clearly said, you know, there have these things that divide the people, and everybody gets excited. Hopefully, this will carry us through. This money will give us that impetus to keep going.
And we're unfortunate in this town that all of the design work will be done by our engineering department. And whatever the Public Works Department can do as a way of constructing a project, we will do with in-house labor.
Right. Yeah, we want as much money to go to the amenities, what it looks like if we can spend least amount of money on consultants and experts and all of this stuff, since we have some of that in-house. Hopefully, it'll work. Maybe a lousy design, which you could have to put up there.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further questions on this, comments? More to come.
More to come.
As we develop it. Again, I want to thank Representative Sean Scanlon for his efforts in securing this grant for us.
Terrific.
Jim, we have another item for you. Don't we need to go on this? We made the motion and seconded it. That's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Paul. Jim, we have a second item.
Yes, I went, attended a pre-construction meeting for, with the DOT last week. They had scheduled to mill and repave Route 77 starting in August because of the demands they've had and all these other communities that have started to realize that their damage to their roads were much more severe than they, they thought they were.
Gee, what a surprise.
Yeah. They pushed that project off a month. This is, Brian has been very interested in this because he wanted to make sure that the merchants downtown knew what was going on. But they, they've pushed that project off a month. They go, they're anticipating starting now, September 17th or something, 16th or 17th, until that date. That, that's a tentative date. But they're going to mill that road. And if you've been around the green down here, you know how badly the pavement is distressed. They're going to mill all the surface inch, inch, inch and a half off of that, then they're going to repave that. It's anticipated a lot of this work will be done at night, so that it has to have a minimal impact on, on traffic.
What is the area again?
It starts, it's Route 77, up at Prospect Hill, coming all the way down to Water Street. It's a, it's a long way.
I know. Jim's memo was sent out late on Friday. It's in the packet there.
And they will be doing Route 1 from the Branford line as far as York Street sometime later in the fall. They don't even, they had planned to do that in mid, mid-September. Now there's been pushback, so that could go into October, whatever. But they are under the gun. The, all this work is being done, done under the, the state has a vendor-in-place bid contract. They have so much response to that, that Tilcon, who is, won that bid for this, this district in Connecticut, they're scheduled right through October right now. So, but luckily, it doesn't affect us. We're starting next, next Monday with milling and paving of Flat Meadow and Pondview Circle. That's two of the roads that we knew we would have to do this, this, this year. And we're also starting next Monday with chip ceiling. We'll start up in North Guilford. We're going to be doing West Street, Beaverhead, Woolworth Lane, County Road up there. And then we have some areas downtown, Balloral and, not downtown, but in the south, Balloral and Old Road. And we're doing a section over Raymond Royal as well. So we, you know, we have that program, that's starting up Monday. We're also milling and paving Monday. And then following that, we're going to be doing the reconstruction of school side, which we've all discussed. We want to get that done before school opens. So it's anticipated that we can get that started and done by September 1. So we got into the game early because we knew we had to. The last piece of roadwork we anticipated doing this year, we put off, which was the River Street reconstruction. If you remember, River Street was really fairly potholed last winter. When we were starting to plan that and do the design, I contacted the water company because I knew they were, you know, they were talking about redevelopment of 66 High Street. And the south end of town has always had problems with pressure. When they built the Public Works Garage years ago, they had to put a booster pump in to achieve the fire, fire protection pressures for the sprinkler systems in the garage. So I contacted the water company to see if they'd want to do something now before they built all the condos at 66 High. And they looked at it, and they first wanted to do just one section. Now they contacted me a couple of weeks ago about holding off doing anything on River Street until they can replace the whole main from Route 1 down to, down to Water Street. Because they really, I'm sure they need that additional pressure. They have a, an eight-inch main on the upper section, but they only have, I think, a four-inch main on the lower section. So they're going to put all eight, I don't even know. They may even boost it, maybe more than eight. But it'll, it'll reinforce their whole grid system down there.
Could we ever tap into the Artesian Spring at Raw Wood Farm?
No.
No?
No. No, we, it's been there.
Yeah.
But the old bottling?
Yeah.
No. No, that's.
Jim, how far are they coming down on US 1 when they do Branford? You said York Street.
You said York Street, which is just beyond, you know, the first section of York Street before you have to go past Long Hill Road.
Webster Bank. Okay, okay.
No, it's not that far. York is, you should come past Long Hill, it's that first York is, you should come past Long Hill, it's that first spur off to, left to go, excuse me, where the old Route 1 used to go, and before Cherry.
With the blue moon.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Okay, okay. Jim, would you pass this information on to the superintendent of schools, as far as the memo you gave us?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
Buses.
The buses, yeah, that they know.
Okay.
That they might have some.
They're going to be doing that night, maybe it'll work.
Yeah.
It's going to be a commotion.
But just so they're informed.
Sure, of course.
If the water company redoes the mains, would they come down, which road?
They're going to come down River Street.
Okay, so they're not going to come down 77 just after it's been repaved?
No, no, no.
Oh, God, no.
I just wanted to check, because that would sound like the logical place to run it would be down.
Except that they're well, and their main supply comes off Long Hill.
Okay.
And so they come down now.
All right, good, good.
I was protecting my road. The state has to protect their own, and I'm going to know about theirs.
Okay.
All right.
But I can understand your thinking.
Yeah.
Well, that always is the problem, the utilities.
Go in reverse order.
Oh, the gas company.
Go in reverse order.
Gas company. Matter of fact, I'm looking at it right now, you know, if you've all driven around, you know the roads, every place has been a utility cut in the last five years. Those were the areas where we had the most damage to our roads because of the frost, heat, even the settlement, frost, even settlement last winter. So we're looking at our road and rules and regulations regarding it, and I hope for the next Board of Selectmen to come in and make some changes.
What is this due to the striping program?
The striping program was held off until we finished Schoolside, and then we would do all of the striping, on the, the centerline striping on our roads at that point in time. The point down, we are responsible for the striping of all the parking spaces on, around the green. The state will, they'll pay for, and they're responsible for crosswalks and the stop bars and that stuff. But all the striping, which is on the east side, all that diagonal parking, that's our responsibility, so we're going to have to find money for that.
And as far as the crosswalk, the wide bars that protect.
I will make an effort to try to get, those were painted before, so they should, they should come to the table and pay for those.
Okay, okay. Because they're, they're pretty beat up right now.
Yeah, and especially because the pavement underneath them is, they're painted on top of the pavement. We have concrete bars that kind of hold the brick in, but the actual white bars on the outside are painted right on the pavement, and the pavement is so distressed, it just, they're very.
Spotty.
Best.
Another one to look forward to.
Yeah, we're almost there.
Any additional questions for Jim? Anything else, Jim?
I was in, I don't know, some town in Maine or someplace, and the crosswalks and the stops were painted in, I think it was a bright blue or a bright green. And they're very noticeable compared to the white stripes. I mean, they really jumped out at you, that you knew that it was a crosswalk.
Huh.
This was, you know, I'd never seen it in any other town. It was interesting. I don't know whether it was a town color or what. But it really caught your attention. I mean, you knew you were something to be watching on the road, just a different color than the white. It might be a bad coming up in a few years, who knows?
Yeah. You know, there's a manual for uniform traffic control. I don't think I've seen any purples or oranges in that thing. It's usually white, red, white. But I, you know, why not? If it works, it works, and that's.
It would just, you know, it really jumped out at you, I guess, you know, you see white lines all along.
I would say it would work better, how about at night?
I don't know.
Yeah, that's the key.
It was a bright, it was a bright blue. It jumped. I mean, it, you know, it was like one of these neon colors I just see nowadays. And I don't know, but it just was because it was so different.
Yeah. That's interesting.
Throw it out there.
If you want me, I'll drive up tomorrow and look at.
No, no, I got it.
Go Saturday.
I got it. I want a day off.
You can probably look at it online. Thanks, Jim. All right. Item seven, appointments and resignations. Seven dot one, Act on a Recommendation to Appoint Mark Larkins as an alternate to the Public Works Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire May 31, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Joe? I'm sorry, you jumped.
I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
I don't know Mark personally, and I assume he's extremely knowledgeable and qualified, but he has been a bidder on town contracts in the past, and we have used his equipment. Does this present a conflict of interest?
That question was asked more than once repeatedly, and he, number one, he doesn't do any work for the town at this point in time, and he said that he would not do any, you know, or bid on any at that point in time. He's not, he's not for the state or the town.
Okay. Is that a negative that a local contractor precludes himself from bidding on a town contract?
Because I don't think he's doing the work.
Maybe not.
It's the direction of his business at this point in time.
Okay, I just know, I just know that we've approved contracts.
Yeah, we asked, because he had so much knowledge of not only the infrastructure in town, but the equipment, and, you know, his shop is right next to Public Works and everything, you know, that obviously sent a lot of red flags. And we came at that from every angle we possibly could in the process, and he does not do any work for the town or the state at this point.
Okay.
Including still firing.
Good question for clarification. Charles Havitt sits on the Republican Candidate Recruitment Committee, and he did ask those questions, the committee did.
We went after that question.
But it's a good point, Gary. Thank you for bringing that up. Item seven dot two, Act on a Recommendation to Reappoint Susan McDermott to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a Term to Expire, February 28, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, item eight, Request for Use of Town Property, Act 812833. Gary?
I would move that we approve the four signed requests as delineated in the section eight of the minutes, or of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved, thank you. Okay, item nine, Correspondence, nine dot one, A Letter from Stephen Page, dated July 13, 2015, Regarding the Citizens Day Parade. Just, there's no action to be taken.
Jim, I thought the Rotary was taken. Are they doing it?
Next year.
Next year, she said they're going to shadow, that's what I thought, okay.
Have they made a decision?
They're going to shadow this year.
Okay.
Rotary's going to shadow Stephen this year, and next year, Stephen's going to shadow them.
Oh, okay.
And then they're going to take it over.
Maybe it would help if I attend the meetings now and then, I don't know, so, okay. Thank you. Any committee reports? You have something, Carl?
No, other than we finished the sidewalk on the north end of the green, but you were there, we had.
Yep.
With the Green Committee and, what, the 375th Committee cast a thousands for that. But it's, it's a job well done. It's, it'll make it much easier for, for people walking across the north end of the green.
Yeah. And, well, Jim left, but we're supervised by, and the Engineering Department, they did a great job.
Again, yeah.
They got it done in about four days, so they did a nice job on that. Okay. Any old business?
I've got a question under old business.
Go ahead, Carl.
Has the planning and zoning hearing been rescheduled that concerns the garage at the Beecher House and the Rothberg Institute?
Yes, it has. It's a September meeting. I don't have the exact date, but it is on the website.
Okay, but it'll be in September?
Yes, as far as I know, it's September. The reason was, I believe, is they had to get a large enough room to accommodate the public. They felt it would, there was a lot of interest in it, and they needed a larger room than their usual meeting room in the community center. As a matter of fact, Trace, would you look that up for the Selectmen and then send them an email? Okay? Anybody else is interested? But it is posted on the website, I believe, though. Okay. Any other old business, Gary?
The only thing I'd say is, I went to the concert last night on the green. Park and Rec had a beautiful night for it. And the green, you know, was scattered.
Nice crowd.
Nice crowd. And it was fun, and, you know, it's there for those people that want to take advantage of it. It's just, it's a fun night. Kids run around, people bring their dogs. It was just, it was well done and a lot of fun.
And as far as the schedule of concerts? That's on the website.
Shakespeare next week, and then the following two weeks after that.
Yep.
It's a Sunday night at 6:30.
Okay. Any new business? Nothing to report. You just mentioned Shakespeare, so that's new. Okay. Public Forum Limited to Three Minutes on Any Item. Anybody wishing to address the board? Mr. Mack?
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good morning. I would like to thank you for that section of the sidewalk I'm using.
That was a gift from the 375th Committee.
Much needed. George Mack, Hammock Avenue. I just came from paying my property taxes, and I would like to make some points about how that money is spent by the town of Guilford. At your May 18 meeting, this board approved the sale of several small parcels of land for anywhere from $100 to a maximum of $1,001. Yet, when the town council was asked about whether she would take care of closings within house, it's my understanding that she replied that they don't do that in-house. I can only assume that the town will now have to pay outside council at the rate of $230 an hour to do the closings. Thus, we will spend much more on legal fees than we receive in sales. Hardly a good fiscal decision from my perspective. As I pointed out at a previous meeting, the town is now paying outside council $250,000 just to litigate assessment appeals. This amount is being billed to the town by Leclair Ryan in New Haven at the rate of $230 an hour. $250,000 is actually $10 for every man, woman, and child in this town. I think most taxpayers could find better uses for such a large sum of money. Keeping the money in town would be a much more productive than paying it to a large New Haven law firm. From a personal perspective, my own assessment litigation against the town has already cost this town more in legal fees than I am asking for in yearly adjustments to my assessment. By the time my assessment dispute is settled or fully litigated, the town will almost certainly spend many times more in legal fees than the total amount I am requesting in tax assessment change. I'm sure this is not unique to my case. An interesting aside, in a conversation I had with the attorney representing the town, which of course was billed at $230 an hour, I was informed that he wasn't used to handling such small claims as mine. Since most of the assessment litigation in Guilford is for the multimillion-dollar homes and properties along the shore, I was frankly insulted. As a retired teacher who has lived in this town for over 40 years, I view my issues just as important as those of residents who own million-dollar homes along the waterfront. I was also told by the lawyer that he doesn't like to settle cases earlier than he might be able, because he prefers to wait until all the cases have been answered and all the experts have been hired. These experts will appraise the property and attempt to determine fair market values prior to the 2013 assessment. Of course, the expert's fee is billed to the town and is certainly not included in the $230 an hour fee to Leclair Ryan. By using this technique, he can file all his pre-trials at the same time. As a practical result, cases take upwards of a year to reach conclusion. Not much consolation to us taxpayers. I might add here parenthetically that it was disconcerting, to say the least, to know that some of the money I just paid to this town is going to be used to hire experts and to pay for outside attorneys, attorneys to litigate against me in my own assessment appeal. Finally, as a fiscal conservative, I want my taxes to be spent carefully and wisely. I also want my town officials and workers to always remember, they work for the taxpayers, for it is we who pay their salaries. Remember, the money you vote to spend is not yours.